Welcome to the Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Dennis Jometh Regional School Committee. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Student representative's report we hold off on our student is in sports. And then they're still in the process after a discussion a couple of weeks ago of appointing an additional person. They have not come to a conclusion in that. So we'll jump into Mr. Coolus and Ms. Edwards to discuss a possible twenty twenty seven high school field trip. So invite you to the podium. I think we have you queued up on the screen, Mr. Coolus. Make sure the green light's on if it's not, or you could just be super tall.
Sorry, yep, there we go. Sorry about that. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to present. Ms. Edwards could not make it tonight, but I am fully capable, I hope. So our proposed trip is to go out to Utah and Colorado. People looked at it and asked me why there. Well, it provides students with a different experience, new cultures, ways of life that they wouldn't have seen or experienced before. It's a very immersive trip. Put them into new situations, get them away from the screen, away from technology, and literally put them out in the wilderness. We will visit national parks. We will go down a riverboat ride at night, have a cowboy style dinner out under the stars. And it will kind of in the vein of Teddy Roosevelt, get them to dare mighty things. Right? Give them that new confidence they might need to go out into the world and give them that real world travel experience. It also exposes them to the nation's natural history as well as American history in general, science and art while we're out there as well. And also for people on the East Coast, it's kind of an uncommon destination. I've only had one or two friends that have gone out there in the past. And the one who actually went out there for a while stayed out there. So I'd love to have these kids experience that. It would be a six day trip. On day one, we start in Salt Lake City, move to Temple Square and Olympic Cauldron Park, and then travel to Moab. Day two, we go to Canyonlands, see the Mesa Arch. And we'd hike around Canyonlands as well. Then we would hike the Grandview Overlook and enjoy the cowboy style Dutch oven dinner. And at night, take a flat bottom boat ride on the Colorado River. Day three, we'd visit Arches, go on a hike through the sand, and then end up at Landscape Arch, Delicate Arch, and the Window Arches. Day four, we would travel to Glenwood Springs, visit the Caverns Adventure Park there. It's the only mountain top amusement park in America. We've seen pictures and videos of it. It's actually kind of cool. You take a gondola ride up there. And you can ride the different roller coasters they have. We will also tour the Ferry or King's Row Caves, depending on the day. And then after that, we will travel to Denver and visit the Meow Wolf Immersive Art Museum. This is, the museum is actually one of a kind. It is the brainchild of about a half a dozen artists. And it creates this new world where they combine four fan- fantasy worlds together. As if a meteorite had crashed into the middle of Denver. So it is different, but it's going to give them an experience that they won't have anywhere else. The last two days, we are in Rocky Mountain National Park, and then we travel down to Boulder. Again, when we are in Rocky Mountain, we'll be hiking different trails. And we will go for different walks and observe native wildlife while we're there. That night, we enjoy dinner and explore Boulder. And on day six, we go to Denver early in the morning, get to see the city during the day, and depart for home. For the cost, it's thirty five hundred to forty one hundred per student, depending on the amount of kids. We're hoping to get to the thirty five hundred amount. We would need about forty kids. That covers airfare, lodging, food, tours, et cetera. No entry fees for them anywhere. Everything is paid for through that. We are looking to give them fundraising opportunities. And the company we go through EF offers scholarships as well. They have to write essays and send them in. And that will help offset the cost for students. It's why we're trying to get it approved so early. We want to give them the time to raise funds, do car washes, bake sales, and put that money away right into the accounts so they can pay it off and give them an easier time of it. We also have about fifteen hundred saved up from previous fundraising for other trips that we've done. And we are going to use it for this as well. And give scholarships to the kids that, you know, may not be able to afford it. We're aiming for April twenty twenty seven, the majority over April break. We're hoping to leave that Thursday or Friday before break. And that way, most of it will be that Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. And they will not miss very much of school at all. That is what I have. I'd gladly take any questions if you have any for me.
Any questions, Ms. Landers?
I love that this is a very different trip than other trips, and I, what a cool opportunity. I, I see that it's for student leaders, right?
Well, so, yes, student leaders, we take recommendations, but we are going to open it up to the student body.
Okay.
In general, if there's a kid that's interested, I wouldn't want to turn them away.
And so since it's not like all, like in previous trips where it's like the robotics club, right? Or kids' interest in robotics go to Japan or something like that. This would be, you know, this could be a pretty wide, you know, varied group of students. And so I wonder how you will either pre or post-trip or both be focusing on the educational component where, you know, you're not going to have all these kids in one science class or all these kids in one history class. So, you know, I don't want this, I mean, it sounds like a great trip, but it should, you know, how are you going to put that in?
So we would want to focus a lot on beforehand, have them look at the history of the parks, look at the history of the interior department, come up with their own little project, assign different groups to a different park. And then post-trip, expand on that knowledge, expand on those projects that we have them do beforehand. And then for the art kids, if kids are going and they're in art classes, you know, photography, taking pictures. They've never had the opportunity, some of them, to see majesty like this before. Painting sculptures, right? We would want them to come back and produce something for us, right? That would be the goal. And also the idea that they will pick up some lifelong skills and be able to transfer them to D Y. So again, like you said, it's not so much they're all in one class. It's not a targeted group. It's more of building community.
So I'm definitely in favor of it, but I would like to see a formalized plan for whatever that looks like.
Okay.
Whether it's asking each student to choose a focus, art, science, culture, history, whatever it's going to be. And so we know that
We can definitely do that.
They're doing some work with you beforehand and that they would have some sort of project or presentation for afterwards based on their experience.
Absolutely. We can bring them in for you too, if you want.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bemis?
Mine is probably an extension of that question. So is it because you're covering a lot of territory and the sites? So is it motor coach and spend a couple of hours at a national park and then move on? Or will students have the opportunity to sort of do outward bound hiking, day hiking, or, you know, adventure or leadership skills in some ways that way?
It'll be a mix of both, right? We'll be in Moab for a couple of days, so we'll travel out to the parks around that area. And we'll spend the day in the parks. And then days four, three and four is a bit more traveling. And along the way, they will stop to get out, explore different trails, different parks. The traveling there is done by motor coach. It's a flight in and out. But the traveling there is on a bus. The company provides the bus. It's paid for through the fees the kids pay already. But the goal is to get them outside as much as possible out into the parks. So they do try to break up the traveling quite a bit for us. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Martin?
So I guess my question stems from the itinerary and seeing the different locations and it's out in the Midwest. And, you know, not only is there going to be, you know, especially in Colorado, there's going to be higher elevation, but there's also a lot of activity, physical activity going on. And I just want to know how familiar you are with the locations and the hiking trails and such? And how well a diverse group of physically active or not physically active students would be able to navigate the hiking and the physical part of it?
I understand. I am not overall very familiar. I've not been out there. I do know that when we go to the different parks, they will provide guides who are from the area who have been in the parks. I don't expect that we'll be going out into the back country. We're going to be on the main trails for them. As for the different levels of fitness and athleticism, we are, we'll, we will have to make it plain upfront that this is what is expected, right? Part of this is hiking. This is going out into the state parks, right? It's not one of those things we could say, I don't want to do it today. See, well, that's part of it, right? It's doing the hard thing, right? If that means going up into the elevation, that's what it is. And naturally, before we go, we run everybody by the nurse's office to make sure that everyone can handle it who has signed up. And this would be pretty far in advance. And make sure that any kids who may have an issue are cleared to go. And again, like you said, it's not the normal type of trip. It is much more of an experience out in the wilderness. So we would definitely keep an eye on kids that we would need to. I hope that answers your question. If it doesn't, we can continue.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it, it does. It's just, um, um. Yeah, I guess, I mean, as I, I guess being, I don't want anybody who wanted to experience this to be excluded because they have, you know, a respiratory issue and they're ten thousand miles up in the air or, you know. Well, I guess it wouldn't be ten thousand miles, but yeah, thank you. Well, there goes my credibility, right? Can you tell I haven't been to Colorado either? Yeah, no, but I mean, and then the, the walking trails being a little more, you know, uh, being, being feasible for somebody who has, you know, a differing ability or maybe a little, you know, a little bit of a medical issue or a physical issue to be able to, to be able to navigate and not miss out on something like this.
Right. I mean, and I, I understand that. And when we do go up higher in the elevation, right, it is to the amusement park. We do take the gondola up. There is no climbing, like I said, in the back, the backwoods or anything like that. All the paths are well traveled. And we do the best we can. I mean, that's, I hate to phrase it that way. If someone needs help, one of us would have to stay behind. You know, one of our chaperones would have to be with that person. That is why we take four or five chaperones.
Okay. That does going to be my next question. How many chaperones would be?
Yep, it would be four to five.
Like, that was my same question for the same reason. If there was different levels of ability, if there was a chaperone that needed to or could.
And we, when we've traveled previously, we have said, hey, today, if someone's going to stay behind, it's you. We have that already pre-sorted out before we go out for the day.
Perfect. And then it sounds like the, this would be the current sophomore junior class that's in high school now. Because then they would be the juniors and seniors in April twenty seven.
It would be the sophomores and juniors, and we were considering opening up to the future tenth graders as well.
Yeah, it sounds like whatever, you know, open it to the, the narrower one. And then if, you know, if you need to get to forty or you want it larger, then opening it up or keeping it to leaders.
Or if there, if there's interest, sorry, I spoke over you. I apologize.
Not a problem. Yeah, or if there's more interest, or if there's, you know, to get more interest, or if there's a lot of interest, it'd be great. Sounds like a great trip. Have any questions, Ms. Landers?
I move that we approve the trip as presented.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Congratulations, and we look forward to this opportunity. And as, you know, Ms. Lander said, we always, any trip that we approve, we love to hear feedback from the students. It just makes it easier for us to approve the next one.
Absolutely. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thanks.
Next, we'll invite Ms. Dick up to discuss the high school parking law policy. And Ms. Bennett, we appreciate you guys coming back. I know we had a lot of questions before. So thank you. Mr. Coolus, turn the green light off on you. Sorry.
There it is. Thank you for having us back. All right, so here we go again. The student parking policy at the high school. You got me?
Yep.
She's my Vanna White. All right, so we decided as a, as an administrative team, we're going to revert back to the current handbook policy, the twenty five, twenty six handbook policy for parking. It's actually under transportation in section E of the handbook. And basically what that policy indicates is that should students have excessive absences, tardies, or dismissals, combined total of five or more, or, or, and, this really should say and or. And or more than five disciplinary referrals and or on social notice, they may lose their parking privileges. I went backwards. Is that the right one? Yeah, okay. So by assigned parking, it supports positive school culture, culture and community. And really what we want to do is create some new traditions, and we're going to get to that. I'll speak to that in a little bit. Establish clear expectations for students, really tied to the handbook and based on accountability and responsibility for the students. Enforce existing policy more efficiently. Again, this would refer to the twenty five, twenty six handbook. Ensure safety and accountability in the parking lot. More organized parking, less More organized parking, less chaos, administrative awareness, reduce stress on students. And also, to remind our students, the parking is a privilege, not a right, and we do have school buses for our students. So, what we are recommending or asking is that students must provide a valid driver's license if they wanna park on campus. They must provide a, a valid driver's license and a valid car registration. And we are proposing a twenty-dollar parking fee that would be deposited into a rolling account that would go toward lot maintenance, potholes, for example, filling those, park, parking lot painting, we may have to repaint the lines, and future upgrades. So, as I said, assigned spots will allow for redu- reduced stress around parking. Um, so, students, basically, you have a spot. It's there for you. It's your comfort zone. You know it's there. It's a comfort, comfortable, familiar place that you're gonna park. You don't have to rush to school, so we're looking for that safety, that safety piece, reducing chaos in the parking lot. And then, the increased safety and tra- better tracking kinda goes hand in hand. The increased safety, again, as we will know who is on our campus, who's parking, who shouldn't be, and again, we know it's as good as we are gonna monitor it, and we haven't worked that out yet, but where we will be working it out. We're gonna try to monitor that as best that we can. Um, and then, again, the clear consequences for policy violations, as indicated in the handbook. And students who are out of compliance may lose their parking privilege, or they could face additional disciplinary action instead of that. So, where are we going? We wanna use parking as a tool for culture change. So, we have brainstormed some ideas. Uh, so, so these are just some, and there could be more. This isn't limited to this. Mystery dates, so, pick a day, random attendance, kids who are there. Maybe we have put all the kids in a random selection. You pick out four, five, one from each class, and maybe they each get a five-dollar Dunkin' Don- dollar gift, Dunkin' Donuts gift card, just to say, "You are here." Other kids will hear about that, and maybe they'll wanna come to school more. Consideration of future open campus. We are preparing these kids for the future, for the next step. And when you're seniors, the next step is college. You have had a lot of freedom. So, we really wanna investigate looking at an open campus in the future. Not something where we are ready to talk about tonight, but something that is definitely on our radar. Paint your spot. This is an open canvas for creativity for our students. They could decorate it with a club or sport they're associated with, with the college that they've been accepted to for the seniors. Um, and it really is a low-cost, low-cost initiative that has a huge return on investment for us, building community and culture in the school. And then, preferential parking, earned through positive behavior and attendance. And, you know, we wanna think about that. So, we're thinking about, you know, maybe it is kids who have great attendance. Maybe it is kids who ha- are on the honor roll, but maybe it's also kids who have improved in an area. So, covering all, all areas of the school. So, again, personalized parking for seniors is what we're exploring. Incentive-based access to premium parking spots, what, what I just mentioned, you know, um, so those kids might get, um, the premium parking spots, the kids that I just mentioned. Um, and there could be more. We're still brainstorming it. Recognition for students with strong attendance, those kinda go together. Um, opportunities for student leadership. So, this is a big one. So, our, our upperclassmen are our leaders, and they're gonna set the tone for our underclassmen. And if they are into the culture, the new tradition of painting the spots, other younger kids are gonna wanna do that. If they abide by the policies, show respect, are respectful, get good grades, are the whole package, other kids are gonna wanna do that as well. So, that's really, you know, looking toward our seniors, giving them, and upperclassmen, giving them an opportunity to be leaders and role models and mentors for all of our younger students. And we also wanna survey them. So, how, what's, we're gonna implement it, but what's working, what's not working, allow them to have a voice. So, it's about more than parking. It encourages accountability, promotes safety, recognizes responsibility, and builds community. So, we hope that you'll consider this policy. Thank you for your time.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Bemis?
This is great. Thank you. So much for coming back and presenting it. So, I guess my only question is, do we have to approve anything or just go yay? Uh, I mean, is the twenty-dollar fee a new thing that we need our approval? Somebody, somebody's nodding at me. Well, I did present it last time, but I don't know. I think I would defer to you on that.
Yeah, so really, the only piece from a policy perspective would be the additional fee, right? Um, they didn't make any changes to the, their handbook. They have reverted back to the previous handbook. Um, and so, from strictly from a policy perspective, the committee would be approving an, an additional fee.
And the committee would approve this? It wouldn't have to be a policy recommendation first?
Technically, it's not really a policy. Um, uh, no, but you're just approving a, a user fee. Yeah.
Ms. Landers?
Um, thank you for coming back. I really appreciate the, the positive tone here. And, you know, you heard us, that's for sure. Um, I like that we are incentivizing, um, and that, you know, this is really about positive culture and, you know, I love the painting of the spots and earning better spots, whatever those might be. I can't, uh...
We could set some aside, but like, we're gonna figure that out.
Right. I mean, and, and that's where you're gonna want, obviously, to survey the kids and find out, you know, what's most meaningful to them. But, um, I really appreciate the tone of this, and, um, I don't have a concern about the twenty-dollar fee. I think if you're, you know, if you've got money to put gas in your car and do all those things, then you should probably be able to come up with twenty dollars, and I'm sure if there were students who were struggling, you would find a way to help them, so...
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, uh, pleased with this. Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Good to see you again. Thanks for coming back.
You too. Thank you.
I do, I, I, I'll echo that the whole tone of this has changed, yeah, and that it's, uh, it's a lot more, you know, positive and, you know, you're, um, it wasn't really the incentive part of it in the last presentation. And, um, and I'll, and I think this is a much better, a much better tone overall for the project. I guess my only question, and you had mentioned that it wasn't really worked out yet, would be the, um, the part of who is, who's in charge of patrolling and, and keeping the lot accountable, you know? 'Cause the, the way, the way I'm picturing it in my mind, it's kind of a, uh, it's kind of a triple check for each car. You gotta see if you have the pass in there, and then you have to see if the pass matches the car, and then you have to see if the car matches the number that they're parking in. Um, so, that's gonna take time. That's gonna take somebody's labor hour, you know, to, you know, that they could be doing, that, that's really not their job, you know what I mean? It's, so, so that's my concern. Um...
Can I answer that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's a great concern, great question. We haven't worked it out yet, but I think between the administration, the SROs, we can work something out. And I don't think it's going out into the lot every day, checking every car. I think maybe it's a random selection here and there. I mean, we're not looking to find somebody doing something wrong. So, I think it would just, we would randomly go out and, and check some cars.
And do you have, um, how, how many, how many student parking spots are there?
I knew this. Um, two hundred seventy-three, I think, if that's on the top of my head, but that's ta- that's staffing, I think, as well. That's everything. Yeah.
That's staff as well? So, I mean, is it about fifty-fifty split between staff and, and things, so...
We don't currently have a parking issue, like, with not having enough spots.
Yeah.
You know, we could someday, which is why this might be a good thing to put in place, and maybe if that ever happened, you'd have to go to a lottery or something, but we're not there. Um, so, I think it's about that, but, yeah, it's probably a fifty-fifty split with, with teachers.
So, and, and as far as the decorating of spots, we're just, we're talking about allowing the students to just, to kinda paint their spots and decorate it the way that they...
Yeah, give them some ownership and some pride and build some culture, you know?
And then, if they lose their spot, the next kid that comes in has to park over an Auburn sign?
Well, that's where the rotating account comes into place. We'll paint it.
Okay. Um, all right, no, I mean, I, I, I do, I do like this version a lot better than I like the la- last version. So, I mean, and, you know, there's some things to work out, but, I mean, you're aware of that, and so, I, and, um, um, I feel a lot better about this today.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming back and putting in the effort into this. I know it's, uh, I know you're trying to get something new, and it's always hard to make change, so I think it'd be a great thing. And I think you'll know when you have a problem when someone says, "There's someone in my spot." I think that's gonna be the time when you, when you have to do it, right? 'Cause once you assign it, and then someone's in the spot. I live in a condo, so I know. They leave, they leave stickers on your window. They leave you love, love notes. It's great. But, uh, perfect. See no other questions? Uh, Ms. Landers?
I move that we approve the parking fee as part of the overall, uh, parking presentation.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the user fee for parking and the amount of twenty dollars. Any questions or other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstained? Congratulations, and thank you again.
Thank you. And just so you know, we're looking maybe to implement this second semester sometime. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next, we'll move to subcommittee representatives liaison reports. Uh, s- school committee liaison select board, we'll start with it. Oh, sorry. I made it. Are you guys okay that I just skipped down? I already checked it off. I'm gonna invite the principals up for in school improvement plans. We'll start with elementary principals. I see Ms. Mahady's coming up.
Hi. I'm Carol Mahady. I'm the principal of Marguerite Small, and we've all done this together. I, I need a Kendra. Um, so, what we've done is we've outlined the strategic objectives, and then each of us will say how we align with that. So, the strategic objective number one is to eliminate disparities in access and achievement for every student by providing learning experiences that promote student independence through strong tier-one instruction, utilizing high-quality instructional materials, leveraging district resources of staff, administration, curriculum, technology, and professional learning structures, and strengthening and fostering relationships with students, families, the community, and all stakeholders. At, uh, Marguerite Small, this first one aligns similarly to what you saw a year ago, and that's to support the implementation of district curriculum by focusing on observation and feedback on instructional practices that impact student learning, and to make sure that those instructional pack- practices are consistent with the H M H New Implementation, the Literacy Collaborative, and Eureka Math Squared. And of course, the point of this is to ensure equal academic opportunity for all of our kids. The second one is that, um, we have a new rubric, not new to the state, but new to us, that the, uh, D Y E A and a group of educators worked together to have us accept this year. And it gives us the opportunity, because we changed a lot of timelines in that, so that s- teachers can make their student learning goals and professional practice goals around the data that's reflective of the students right in front of them. Before, before the MAP or other assessments were in, they already had to decide their goals. So, this is a much better way to go forward with this, and we're excited about that. Finally, at Emmy Small, we've created a student attend- we wanna increase student attendance rates. And we've created a committee that looks at this. We're looking at, um, working with families. We have an attendance team, and we communicate timely. If we don't hear from you by eleven o'clock in the day, you get a nice little, um, phone call and a little parent square reminder, um, just saying, "Hey, we're missing Jenny today." So, thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm, uh, Pat Riley. I'm the principal at the Ezra H. Baker Innovation School. Very pleased to be, uh, joining you this evening and, uh, presenting our school improvement plan for you. Uh, at the Ezra H. Baker Innovation School, uh, we would like to, uh, align to the strategic initiative by, uh, leveraging the innovation scheduling model, uh, to refocus our efforts to improve, uh, student writing outcomes. Uh, we've done some analysis of the, uh, student responses to the MCAS writing prompt over the last few years, and, um, are identifying areas, working with our, our coaches, um, where we can, um, promote improvements, uh, especially with student response to writing. Um, Kevin Depen, uh, started that last year, and, uh, that's an initiative that we'd like to, uh, carry forward. Uh, you'll see some similarities between, uh, some of the items here with the other elementary schools. Uh, implement the updated P L C model and handbook to establish educator learning. Uh, one of the, uh, strategic objectives this year is to, uh, have consistent, uh, professional learning community practice, uh, across the district. And so, we've taken measures, uh, at Ezra Baker already this year to, uh, put those structures in place and to, uh, lead, uh, right out of the gate with, uh, consistent, um, agenda formats, um, and scheduling our coaches to be at those P L C meetings regularly, uh, for, uh, conversations and planning with teachers for literacy and math. And then, uh, similar to Emmy Small, we certainly want to have our students in the seats, uh, so they can work with our wonderful teaching staff, um, and do all their best learning, and we know that attendance is one of the biggest factors in that. Uh, so, similar to Emmy Small, we are gonna be promoting school-wide practices that encourage consistent attendance.
Hi, I'm Valerie Kelly. I'm the principal at Station Up. Uh, we have similar themes to the other two elementary schools. We, again, this year, looked at our master schedule and reconfigured things so, to allow for long uninterrupted subject area instruction, as well as common planning and structures to P L C in alignment with the district strategic in- initiatives. We are supporting the, um, we're not calling it pilot classes, the pioneers, the H M H pioneer teachers, uh, for the implementation of our new curriculum. We are continuing the What I Need, the Wind Block during the extended learning time that was initiated last year. This allows for in- intervention and E L instruction to happen outside of tier-one instruction, affording more time for in-class, uh, availability for those students. And we're trying to be responsive to our M C A S data and focus on, uh, specifically early numeracy, as well as, um, an intentional focus on fractions for math, for E L A, renewed focus on the daily writing, and, uh, for reading focus with, um, fogtail proficiency. And finally, we're gonna, uh, do, con- continue with many walkthroughs, uh, with the focus being on priority standards and high-leverage instructional practices.
All right, good evening. So, Tim Blake, principal of D Y, intermediate. So, same goals. So, based on M C A S data, we have teacher goals that focus on writing and math. So, similar to what you've heard before. So, in literacy, we're working with the curriculum department to support the new curriculum. Uh, we're asking students to write at least twice a week in response to texts, and at least once a month on a longer writing assignment that's more revisable and editable. And we're utilizing P, P L C meetings to analyze student writing with the end result of, we could then go into your class and see an observable writing strategy. In math, kind of a similar, kind of like flow to this. We're gonna add more math fluency activities based on target standards, so I can certainly start reading the standards that we need to do better on. You might stop me after a couple, but, right, in fourth and fifth grade, lots of fractions, lots of math fluency, and all your math facts and division. Um, and then utilizing our P L C meetings to analyze end-of-module assessments and benchmark assessments to create observable teaching strategies based on student performance. So, we just actually did that today. Um, there was one standard where their students didn't do as well as we hope on measurement. And so, then we got into their next module, identify the specific lesson and how we would modify some things within the prescribed curriculum that we think would help improve student achievement. And then, last one is utilize S T math, which is a tier-two curriculum resource for all students, at least sixty minutes a week. That's where studies have shown we get the most kind of bang for the buck. Um, if you had a fourth and fifth grader and asked them about Gigi the Penguin, they might be able to tell you a little bit about it. But this is kinda where S T math, where it's all problem-based. Um, if I gave you all an iPad and said, "Here's a problem," you would probably say, "Tim, there's no directions there." And I would say, "Rock on, figure out how to move it." Some of you might jump on it right away, and some of you might give me the iPad back, but, um, it's definitely a good curriculum resource that we're using. Um, once we get to the third goal, you'll see why I'm not allowed to come up here and talk about anything. So, I got another one here. So, part of this goal is to create a sustained and positive... So, part of this goal is to create a sustained and positive classroom community by addressing students' socio-emotional needs. I know I spoke about this a little bit last year. And we've moved from zones, which if you've ever seen the movies with like all the characters that are all different colors, so kids at a young age describe themselves as different colors. Well, that's been kind of a part of kids' elementary upbringing. Last year, we introduced Boston's vs. Bullies and All In as a way to promote approach anti-bullying. But now, we have a new district resource, which is Wayfinder, that's gonna align all these efforts. So, really, at our school was kind of to, you know, I hate to say scrub out all the old things because they're not all bad things, but to make sure that we're all using the common resource and kind of moving on from those past resources because that's where kids are gonna be used to K-12. So, our goal is really classroom teachers complete a specific 10 lessons by the end of May. So, they've been trained, and they're ready to go as of November 1st. Our related arts staff within Wayfinder, there's a collection on absenteeism. So, they're gonna make sure all kids get that. So, it's not just in their regular classrooms, but it's also related art teachers as well. I know this was brought to school committee at some point. We're making sure we have calm corners in classrooms. All classroom teachers will complete MY Saber screening. So, we just did that recently, and I know some interventions have gone into place, like literally today. I know I can't click there, but there'll be a little bit more details there.
I'm still Carol Mahady. The strategic objective number two, establish consistent district-wide systems to support organizational effectiveness that supports student learning, effective communication, development of a positive public image of the district, and allow DY to be able to respond effectively to changes in the educational landscape as they occur. At ME Small, we're gonna continue what we began last year and was really successful. A monthly cycle of our professional learning communities focused each literacy, math, then on data and data-driven decision-making, and then connected to those PLCs around data. We're gonna utilize the multi-tiered support system to continuously review and analyze current and relevant data in order to deliver instruction across classroom tier-one intervention and also specialized settings. I'm very excited, and if you haven't seen this yet, we've really embraced our social media presence this year. And we've been just focusing on posting simple but positive experiences that students are having in school on both Facebook and Instagram.
So, when I thought about strategic objective number two and aligning the school improvement plan, one thing that came to mind for me was that, thinking about systems, we want to put things in place that aren't person-specific, but that can be sustainable across several years and no matter who's taking the lead on different initiatives and different things. So, part of my work, my entry work, following someone who has been a really strong leader at Ezra H. Baker for many years, is to really identify all of the different committees, we'll call them, or different support groups of adults that work to address different levels of student need across the school, and really identify what the purpose of all those different working groups are and what opportunities we have for realignment or redistribution of those responsibilities so that we're not duplicating efforts across different committees and groups and things that we have working, whether it be the student support team or the PBIS team, or other teams, child study, things that we have in place right now, that, again, thinking more from a systems approach, how can we make that work efficient and sustainable so that it can continue and be successful for several years to come? So, part of that work, I'd like to codify that by creating MTSS, Multi-Tier Systems and Support Handbook, to provide consistency in how we look at the whole student and support their needs from that classroom-level tier-one instruction all the way through any interventions they may need if they're not responding to that main classroom instruction. And another really important goal for this is to reestablish our student, our school council, which hasn't been in operation for at least a year or so. So, efforts are already underway to get some nominees and go through the process of electing educator and family and community representatives.
At Station Ave this year, we have adopted the FIN. We copied Ms. Bennett at the high school. Every Monday morning, we meet with our social-emotional team, which is our assistant principal, school social worker, behavior teacher, and school psych to talk about needs related to attendance, academics, and behavior. In alignment with this, we're trying to increase connectedness to school and reverse any negative absenteeism trends. Similarly, we have created enrichment block with our related arts team, which meets for 25 minutes a day with a focus on SEI or SEL to help some of our students increase their connectedness to school in different ways and for our multilingual students to have another opportunity to review that contextual language that is offered in those related arts groups. We are trying to focus this year on having shorter data cycles to foster instructional responsiveness to performance data and timely implementation of interventions for academics, behavior, and attendance. And finally, similar to the other schools, our child study team or student support team meets collaboratively to discuss and support dynamic needs of students using evidence-based and data-driven practices.
All right. So, the way I'm gonna explain this last goal here for me is, it's a little bit between the first goal, strategic objective, and the second one. So, without just kind of reading from there, what this looks like is, for years, we've put a ton of effort because in fourth grade is the first time all the kids from Dennis and Yarmouth come together, and you need to spend a lot of time, you know, creating a school community. And I feel we do a pretty good job of that. So, there's a couple of ways that we know that. Between some PBIS surveys that the kids take, there's some, it's called vocal surveys at the end of MCAS, where we've got some pretty good feelings about how the kids feel about that. Sometimes complex things, I feel like, have a little bit like simple solutions. So, when we looked at some of the, we did a family survey. Parents, in terms of they rated their belonging to the school was good, but it really wasn't where we wanted to. So, the way I've been explaining this to people is, as much time as we put into the kids getting to know each other, not really the adults. So, what that ends up looking like, and I'm gonna pick on Ms. Landers just for a second. No prob, I know you wouldn't mind. So, if like Ms. Landers was a new fourth-grade parent, and her son came home and said, "Hey, I'd like Tim to come over to our house," that parent might really say, "Well, I don't really know who he is." Because you don't know the family. So, as a member of our school council said, "It's hard to be a community when you're all strangers." So, we're putting a considerable amount of effort of having a couple of different events where not just people come to the school, but they would come to the school and meet the other families that are in their kid's homeroom. So, then those, hopefully, those kind of like social networks can increase. So, that's basically what it says all up there. So, we did a Music Bingo night for the first night here, which was really not a, it wasn't an academic night. It was just a fun night. So, if you've ever maybe been out at a restaurant where they had Music Bingo, that's exactly what it is. Whole families came in, they sat with their families. We had enough popcorn to feed like probably the high school from the '99, which was great. And we just had a great event, and we had fourth grade all by themselves. We had a ton of people here. We did for fifth grade, we still had a ton of people here. So, we're pretty excited how that went. So, we wanted to plan one more night before we get into the holiday season. So, we're planning, we're meeting this Thursday, like a little Taste Around the World night on the 19th. So, that hasn't solidified it yet, but really, we wanted to get some other nights when parents come to school, have a chance to meet people, and it wasn't like parent-teacher conference or open house. So, that's what we did.
Thanks, Sam. I taught him everything he knows, not really. Strategic objective number three is to address the district's short- and long-term facilities and capital needs. Not that I know anything about that. By developing a multi-year capital plan, collaborating with the appropriate governance boards to appropriate funding, and securing support of stakeholders to ensure a safe and 21st century learning environment for all students and staff. Back me up, Sam. Thanks. At ME Small, first and foremost, as all of you know, is to continue our work as the building committee and to comply with all timelines and tasks as outlined by the MSBA. Could not be happier about that opportunity. And then, to continue to work with DY facilities personnel on internal improvements and repairs. I don't know how much you know about this, but last year, we had a, I affectionately called it the MES Makeover Committee, and we made a long-term, a long list of building improvements. But we also figured out short-term solutions, and we shared it with the facilities department. And we have really burned through that list. If you haven't been at ME Small, the newly painted entryway is just a phenomenal improvement and many other things along the way. So, it was definitely a many hands make light work endeavor, and we're gonna continue on that. And then, finally, and this is long and short-term, is to collaborate with families and community groups and local government to facilitate the improvements that all of our ME Small students and families deserve. Thanks.
All right. So, very similar to ME Small, working with our facilities department and technology personnel on internal improvements and repairs that we can make within the building. I always like to say, we may be the oldest building in the district, but we don't need to look like we have old things in our school. Our students and our teachers and families deserve to have a school that's welcoming and inviting and have instructional resources and equipment that are geared for 21st century learning. So, again, with the school council, prioritizing areas for facilities improvement and making sure that we have this list ready to present to any relevant capital planning stakeholders or committees. The school council's gonna be a really important body to provide that insight. And then, along with that, making sure that we are keeping our eye on the upcoming centennial celebration because the building was built in 1930, the main part of the building. The first class of students was welcomed in 1931. But we certainly wanna celebrate that cornerstone 1930 centennial. That's just a few years away, actually. So, getting into the initial stages of planning for that and really, because I imagine that will still be there in 2030. The MSBA, while they're a great organization, they do tend to move a little at their own pace, of course, right? So, we'll still be there in 2030, we hope. And we wanna make sure that that's something that we celebrate.
At Station Ave, spirits are up with the realization of the long-awaited playground. We are in the final stages. There's just a few steps left, and it's mostly just pouring the footing and the port in place. So, it'll be, we will have a fully functional, state-of-the-art playground that's fully ADA-compliant and accessible for all of our students. And for some of our students with different needs, this will be the first time they'll be able to access the whole playground. So, it's a very, very big deal, and students are getting to watch this happen in real time every day. They're watching the progress and asking questions to the workers, and it's really great to see. We have a new librarian this year, and we've been working to innovate the Station Ave library and taking a look at ways we can enhance our maker space and technology resources as well as revitalize our book collection. We are still addressing some of the overcrowding that occurred at Station Ave over the past few decades, and part of that course correction is creating traditional spaces for important therapies to take place. And so, this year, we were able to instill, to create a proper occupational and physical therapy space for those services to be provided, which is a big deal. We also have a new harbor program, which is for students with social-emotional needs, and we were able to get support from the district to get optimal furnishing and sensory-sensitive tools for students in that program to be really truly set up for success. And it's been successful launching so far. And this year is the 30th birthday of Station Ave. So, we have some long-term capital planning to consider, and so, we're trying to map out kind of what updates and replacements of bigger systems, like the roof or exterior doors or the furnace, boiler, fun things like that, what that would entail and how to properly plan for that fiscally. And I think Tim wasn't allowed to.
I think because Mr. Blake had two pages earlier.
Yeah. So, that concludes the K-5 school improvement planning, and we are open for questions.
Wonderful, yes. I see he did two pages, so he didn't have to do one at the end. Any questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Landers?
Tim, you used some acronym, MY Saber, something like that. What's that, please?
It's the Social, Emotional, Academic Behavior Screener. It was purchased separate from Wayfinder, but it's basically a risk screener to help us identify students who are at risk in any of those domains and afford us a meaningful vehicle to get them the right supports.
So, all students are screened?
Grades two through eight, and they can opt out, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Soon we'll move up the grade to the middle school.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Bavino, principal here at the middle school. So, we're really focused on the strategic plan number one that Carol read to us. Our goal for this is to really focus on student engagement and student ownership of their academics. We are accomplishing this through three different initiatives. We are starting student-led conferences this year. We have a Wind Block and continuing our work within PBIS and using LiveSchool. So, when we're looking at conferences, we were noticing that there was a downward trend of student ownership and as well as family participation. So, as a middle school, we wanted to really start focusing in on our students, kind of having ownership, and working through accountability of their own academics. These conferences, over the past week or so, students have been working on building a portfolio or slide presentation that will be used during these conferences this week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Students will allow the, will attend the conference with their families and present how they have been doing throughout their academics so far this year. Within the portfolio and presentation, there are also some other reflection areas that focus on areas that students might be doing well in or areas that they might need a little additional support. So, they're, again, taking ownership and kind of reflecting on what they need from us as adults. Hopefully, through this initiative, students will feel a sense of accountability, and we will see an increase of family participation. And in the spring, students will continue to build off this portfolio so that they can see the progress that they've made throughout the year. So, our second goal is adding in a Wind Block, similar to Station Ave. It is a block within the day that we have been able to use kind of as a flex block. Initially, we front-loaded all of our social-emotional weight. Initially, we front-loaded all of our social emotional Wayfinder lessons within there. So they've been working with their homeroom, so they've been creating more of a smaller community within the larger school community. And now, as we continue to move for the, through the first trimester, we're going to start grouping students into various groups that can either work on areas that need support or areas that can be advanced or accelerated. Those groups will stay together for five weeks. They'll focus on a specific learning task or area that can either catch them up to their peers or advance them in a certain area. We are using data to identify these groups and build these groups. So the three main data resources we're using is our fall MAP data that was taken school-wide. We are utilizing iXL, so students have an individualized pathway in iXL that they can work through and that provides us kind of where they are comparative to their peers. And then obviously the day-to-day classwork that they're doing within their curriculums. And so teachers are taking those three data points and building the groups accordingly so that they can focus on certain learning tasks. And thirdly, to continue to improve our school climate, we are continually building on our PBIS initiative that is district-wide. The one thing that the middle school does a little bit differently than some of the other schools in the district is we have a program called LiveSchool. So LiveSchool is an incentivized program that when students are caught doing the right thing, staff members have the ability to give them points within the program. And then we have various incentives, being able to climb the rock wall after school with a staff member. Purchasing stuff at our school store. So based on their points, they can purchase different things at the school store. That happens every other week during lunch blocks. So it's really trying to catch students doing the right thing. This past Friday, we, all the students were rewarded with snow cones provided by the administrators because the whole school by October 17th had reached 40,000 points as a school, whole wide school. So we served them all ice, uh, snow cones on Friday afternoon and kind of incentivize and have those larger school-wide promotions. And then, just like everyone else within our district, we are continually working on our students attendance rates. We are strong believers that students need to be in the building and in the classroom to receive the high-quality instruction of our teachers, from our teachers. This year, our social worker spent much of his, much time this summer to look at students' past history and try to be ahead of the curve on student attendance. He connected with families and students that have had chronic absentee in the past. We sent out communication through Parent Square daily if we haven't heard from family members of why a student may be absent from school. Obviously, these communications don't excuse the absence, but it just helps us understand how we can support the family and students kind of moving through the school year. And then we are collaborating with various organizations like PAST Program and the District Attorney to really kind of have a stronger handle of the students that do have continually chronic absenteeism. So really, obviously, the first step was to implement the student-led conferences this past fall. That was a big initiative of ours to get it off and running by this week. So that's been a big focus this past fall. The next step for me is to really find a, or develop an assessment tool or a survey to provide to families and staff and to see how the student-led conference compared to the traditional parent-teacher conference. And then obviously, continue communication with all stakeholders throughout the process.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bavino. Any questions or comments for the middle school? Seeing none, I'll let you run and invite up Ms. Bennett.
Good evening. I'm Kendra Bennett, principal at the high school. Here we have our 2026, or sorry, 2526 School Council. And, you know, they're a contributing part of the school improvement plan. This is, we have seven objectives in our five-year plan. So the first one is to increase the quality of Tier One instruction, which refers to the general education provided to every student, which is crucial for enhancing overall student achievement. And you'll see it's aligned with the district's strategic objective of eliminating disparities in access for every student. So I began with a three-year plan, and this was the progress that was delivered to the staff during the August professional development days. So I'm really proud that, you know, some items that we had slated for year three, we've already started some work on, but we have met our year-one objective last year of defining those expectations for Tier One instruction and continuing to improve on that through scaffolds, professional development, and our curriculum audit and alignment in years two through three. And currently, we're in year two of the school improvement plan. Objective number two is to develop a strategic plan to address the NIASC four focus areas. This is aligned with the district's strategic objective of establishing district-wide systems and supports for organizational effectiveness. So the four areas that NIASC two years ago in our collaborative conference, they identified in partnership with us were the school improvement plan, our vision of a graduate, our interventions of support, and our consistent curriculum across all courses that we offer. We have our decennial visit in March, so that's when we'll be putting, we have the report written and all the evidence to show the two years of work from the collaborative conference. So again, a lot was met in year one. Some goals from year three were met because we have the deadline of March 8th to show them all of the work we've completed. Objective number three is to develop a resource to communicate progressive discipline effectively to teachers that is essential for maintaining consistent and fair disciplinary practices across the school. Again, this is aligned with the strategic objective of consistent district-wide systems. Our handbook, of course, was a really great tool to enhance the communication of the progressive discipline. And with the handbook as a resource, we were able to meet and be in progress for our goals. Objective number four is enhance systems to support the Dolphin Way, which is our PBIS model, in environments beyond the traditional setting. So hallways, cafeterias, property, fields. And again, aligned with the district-wide systems of support for organization, organizational effectiveness. And we have, I'm proud to say, we have in year two moved bathroom duties to hall duties and all bathrooms are open. So again, I'm really proud of the progress that we have made. We, again, have a Dolphin Way rubric in areas beyond the classroom. So we have posted that and handed it out to every classroom teacher at the beginning of year two and having clear behavior expectations. Objective, did I skip one? Yeah. For, objective number five is increase academic achievement and access and enrichment opportunities through the Dolphin Time, which again is our flex block for intervention or enrichment. And this is aligned with the district objective of eliminating disparities for every student. Again, we have a lot of goals aligned with improving Dolphin Time, so we have a mix of meeting and in-progress. And, you know, for what is next, I am implementing a committee of interested staff that want to work dedicated on improving Dolphin Time. I've noticed academically, it is increasing the number of students that are on honor roll. So it is working, but like anything else, it can be improved. Number six is increase effectiveness of the leadership team, which is derived of the department chairs. And again, lots of goals to meet, and we're improving that. We have revamped the structure of leadership. We meet once a week. And, you know, are, again, breaking up, it's a group of about 13 department chairs, breaking up into smaller groups to get tasks completed during that weekly hour. So moving beyond just meeting and really have action steps for that, for those weekly meetings has been incredibly beneficial. And then the seventh objective is to increase the effectiveness of the high school administrative team, to enhance leadership, improving operations, and fostering a positive school environment. And again, we have, I've limited myself to two years. I don't want to wait for any three-year goals on this one. And we are, you know, a mix of meeting and in-progress. But we have three different types of meetings now that the administrative team, they participate in. And so we meet to three to four times a week with different targeted objectives for those different meetings. And again, really enhancing the leadership and operations of the high school. So some things I just wanted to note moving forward before I get to questions. Just like, again, all the other schools, we are, again, this being a five-year school improvement plan, something I'll want to add is our focus on attendance as well. We are implementing, we were an innovative career pathway school, and now we're moving to career pathways, which is going to be another initiative that's going to take every teacher in every content area to execute. So that will be towards the end of this school improvement plan. And then keeping this progressive work moving, identifying areas that we want to be included in a school improvement plan with the teachers and the school council, and then designing committees to get that work moving. I was, I had the benefit of NIASC to create that organizational structure, but I don't want to wait for NIASC to keep that going because we got a lot of work moved forward. So that's what's to come in future school improvement plans. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bennett. Any comments or questions? Ms. Landers.
On high school objective number three, which is develop a resource to communicate progressive discipline effectively to teachers, the third thing says, "A system to document non-disciplinary responses." What is that?
So we have implemented a plugin in Power School. So it's a four-year information, something that can log. It may be, I'm, my expectation with teachers is that Tier One and Two behaviors are handled in the classroom. So maybe there's a mechanism a teacher has implemented that's working. It doesn't rise to the level of disciplinary, but you want a log of it. We have a mechanism for that through Power School. Additionally, if a social worker is meeting with a student and working with them on something that we don't want it to rise to discipline, but we want to be aware that someone, support staff, is working with this student on, you know, this type of behavior. Maybe it's tardies to class. It's, there's going to be a log of it, a record of it, but it's not rising to discipline.
It sounds like in HR, the note to file. In your HR, it-
It's a note in your, it's in your, it's in your records. Objective number five, Dolphin Time. So it says, for instance, "Year two, personalized learning through individual support and differentiated instruction." Year two met. So what does, what does that look like? Where do I see that in?
Yep. Thank you. Great question. So again, this was, I mean, look, I don't think you're asking how the grid works, so I'll save that.
No, I mean, so like, as a parent-
Yes.
-whose son has Dolphin Time-
Yep.
Where, where's that happening?
Yep. So a teacher can, like, so an example, I just met with a teacher today, a science teacher. Students, we have tiered approach. They meet with Dolphin Home Teacher, have a conversation, how they're performing academically. So if a student is struggling, you know, they might say, "Hey, you've got to see your science teacher." In our handbook, it states that a student shouldn't be told more than two times to go to a teacher because you don't want to fill up the four Dolphin Times of that week with the same science teacher. It's meant to give them some enrichment, a little bit of a break. So the Dolphin Times, Dolphin Home Teacher may say you have to go see science. So what this science teacher has described to me in her class is for that individualized approach, it's more small group, but she's physically designed her classroom to be the first two rows. Kids are working on, you know, makeup assignments, possibly a makeup test. Then she's got a row in the middle where she'll print them out, "This is what you're missing in class." Sorry, she explained the first two rows as high leverage, so those big assignments. The second row, maybe a homework assignment or a classwork, maybe it's a lab that they can work on together. And then further back in the room, kids, they're there because they chose to see this teacher and it may be some enrichment, some extended lab. So teachers are identifying individual approaches to meeting students' needs as they're scheduled for them in Dolphin Time.
And is that, and then in year three, you had data-driven decisions met. Can you tell me what that means?
Yeah, so again, decisions made on Dolphin Time are all data-driven. Again, even students that have the choice, they have the autonomy, the data backs up that they're able to have that choice through their academics. So again, with MAP testing, we have, the PLCs are analyzing in the math, English, science, and social studies, state testing. They might curate some small groups that are necessary. So all of the decisions made for Dolphin Time are data-driven.
At, at the level of, like, the Dolphin Home Teacher reviewing the student's current grades?
So it's a combination. Student, so Dolphin Home Teachers can schedule students, but also teachers can bring groups in. So again, I have a teacher on Thursdays, he brings in a small group of students that need a specific work, and that will be, he will curate that group. So by the time they're at Dolphin Home, they're already locked in with that teacher. So it's a combination, but data is driving all those decisions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. It's a lot of information, and I know we have the specific plans behind that we've all reviewed and can look back if we have any other questions. But thank you to all the principals and staff for putting this together to help us understand where we're going with our students, with our families, and, you know, in line with our district goals. So thank you. I already checked it off, so that's complete. A little early. We'll move to Subcommittee Representatives Liaison Report, School Committee Liaisons to Select Board for the Town of Dennis. I know we have their town meeting as, town meeting for the Town of Dennis is tomorrow in the Performing Arts Center next door, auditorium. Nothing school-related on that one. For the Town of Yarmouth, I know they're for a vacancy. They are taking application. People who are interested can fill out form on the town website. I believe they're taking applications or nominations until the 31st, I believe, which is a Friday. And then on that meeting following on the Tuesday, they will either make an appointment or make a different decision on that date. And then town meeting for the Town of Yarmouth is Monday, November 17th. And we do have an item on the warrant regarding Marguerite Small and for information on that, which we'll talk about shortly. Perfect. Next, we have information for quarter one for July to September 25 about the Cape Cod Collaborative, and I'll pass it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you. So in the packet, once you get past all the school improvement plans, there is a quarterly report from the Cape Cod Collaborative. Just stepping in for Mr. Morris. And so we attended the, or I think as I've mentioned to the committee before, I do sit on the Collaborative Board as the superintendent liaison. So I'm not a voting member of the board, but I'm the liaison to the superintendents. Um and so there's a, as part of uh the collaborative board's responsibilities is the school committee members to come back and provide the representative school committees with a quarterly report. So this is uh again, in the packet, a copy of the quarterly report. It goes over topics um from um just sort of a spotlight, which looks at um some pieces from the summer program um in the ASLP, uh to a summary of the executive director's report. Um as you may remember, a new executive director took over mid-year last year. Um and then to some, to their key programs, um their STAR program, which runs out of their Austinville campus, to the Waypoint Program, which is the one that runs right out of here in Yarmouth. Um and then as well as some facilities updates. Um but again, the, the reports there in detail for um the committee to review at your leisure. Um I wasn't able to attend the entirety of the meeting cuz that was the same night as the um finance committee meeting uh to meet in Yarmouth to review um the ME Small um warrant article uh with the finance committee. So I was only able to be there for a little bit in the beginning. But um happy to take any questions if there are any questions about the collaborative.
Any questions on the collaborative? Okay, seeing none. Uh we'll move to MES Building Committee. We had a great meeting last week, I believe it was. Um we did appoint a vice chair, Kurt Sears, has accepted the role of vice chair um to assist us with that. He was, he has continued to be a great asset in the, in this school. Uh he's one of the only members that's still active. Um we don't have a need for the entire committee, but he's been a great active person in the punch list and making sure everything's completed here. Uh so we're very happy that he accepted the role of vice chair for the MES. Um we did come up with and are finalizing a fact sheet. Um it's going to be a one-page double-sided. We asked for one page, so uh we were given a one-page double-sided fact sheet uh about uh what we are asking for uh in the warrant and why we are asking for it. Um it was brought up by the committee in our first meeting that um the voters may not understand, you know, what we're looking for, what if, what is a feasibility study? Um why do we need one point five million dollars uh to investigate what we could do? You know, it seems like a lot of money. Uh but we put information on facts on previous projects within the state of similar size. You know, the average was one point two to two point five um with schools similar to our size. Um but the most recent one was two thousand twenty-two. So when you look at, you know, what the cost is of the average of one point two to two, that one point five uh seems um to, to be a good average. It also includes what is included in that. Um you know, the hiring of a firm, uh investigating all the options, whether it is uh a renovation of the current building, whether it is an expansion of uh a current building like Station Ave, um acquiring uh another building in town that we may already own, or the town may own, or building a, a freestanding building. Um so it includes all the options that could go into play. Um we discussed the actual warrant article as it would be presented. Um it is very wordy, as was uh, as was stated uh by the town administrative. However, it was a collaboration of the MSBA, of what they required us to put in, what the town lawyer asked for us to put in, what MSBA reviewed it as, and then what our council uh asked for it to be in. Um so is a, there's a plan for a presentation at town meeting to, you know, read the warrant article, but then explain uh what it is. Uh the town has recommended that we request free cash um versus um getting a bond or getting um having interest on a loan, um as well as highlighting uh the fact that uh if accepted into MSBA, the minimum uh contribution that can be um not refunded, but reimbursed is fifty-seven point one percent. So you know, it's a benefit of the town of using free cash and not taking a loan out uh of the one point five million and then being able to give fifty-seven point one percent of, you know, things that can be reimbursed back to the town. Um so there's an explanation of all of that. Am I missing anything? Okay, so yeah, so a lot of, a lot of great things, we um, a lot of great feedback. Um and then, you know, it'll, it'll be on um members of that committee and members of, you know, the town at large to make sure. Um as in every, everything that we have in town, specifically town meetings, town elections, that people show up, their voices are heard, and that they, they get out and vote. Um so that's a very key and important thing in both towns, uh that people utilize that opportunity uh that they have. Dr. Smith?
Yeah, and just uh, it's just a couple of updates since that meeting. Uh Dr. Gilson and I went in front of the Capitol Committee right prior to this meeting, so uh gave that group uh an update on um, cuz they'll have a voice as well um on the one point five million dollar ask. And then Lila and I met today to take the feedback from the committee. Uh she reworked the draft, uh and so that's set. We had one message ready to go out today, already on School Safety Week. So we didn't, just didn't wanna jumble the messages out. So probably by tomorrow, if not Wednesday, that message will be ready to go out. Will go out on all of our channels, and we'll put it out a couple of different times on reminders, out to folks. And then we'll also push, uh send it to the Town of Yarmouth for them to put it out on their um, their communication channels as well.
Then the last thing that I, that popped in my head is we're also having an open house at ME Small. Um I believe it's a, it's a Wednesday, November fifth, if I have the date correct.
Yeah, I believe so.
It's a, it's a Wednesday night, it's prior to their normal PTO meeting. And we're inviting anyone in the commu- community who is, wants to see in, with their eyes uh the things that are mentioned, um from security concerns to um, you know, the building itself, that they have the ability. Um it was, that was recommended by the committee that, you know, some people may wanna see it in real life. Um we have a plan to have pictures from the Cape Cod Times rolling in the, in the foyer of the, of some of the back of the house stuff that maybe they can't get to. Um but, and you know, we're working. Yeah, we're, we're.
We'll hope it's raining that day.
We're gonna, the, the fire department has offered to spray the hose over the building um to uh make it seem like it's raining.
Yeah, it's November fifth at five thirty.
Yeah, so November fifth at five thirty. But we, we wanna give all the opportunities to the town, uh to the people uh that have questions, to ask the questions, and, and see it before the meeting. Um we've taken some great feedback from the community on, you know, making sure that uh they know what they're voting for and where their money's going. It's perfect. Any other questions on? Uh next, we'll move into the superintendent's report, recognition, donations, and acknowledgements.
All right, thank you. All right, so starting with some recognitions. Uh this week, uh as was mentioned by Mr. Bavino, we have family teacher conferences uh most of the schools in the district. And I just wanna take a quick minute, recognize and thank the PTOs at each of the schools. Uh the PTOs do many amazing uh things for our students. Uh they provide additional social and extracurricular opportunities for our students, but they also do an amazing job of taking care of our staff. And they're providing lunches at each of the schools for our staff on, at parent-teacher conferences. So again, just wanna just big thank you out to the PTOs for supporting not only the students, but supporting the staff on days like um the upcoming t- uh teacher conferences over the next couple of days. Um Tim stole my thunder, but I wanted to recognize D Y I for the previous Family Fun Night that they had. You know, they recognized, as a school, recognized a, a missing need in they, as the school that brings fourth graders together for the first time. Had done a bunch of work to bring the kids together, but re- recognized a gap around families. Uh and so again, done some purposeful work to structure events meant to bring those families together um in a way, as Tim mentioned, where um it's about getting to know the, the parents of the kids that my, my, that my kids are in class with, right? It's um really facilitating those relationships. Um and, and again, the last one was a success, and I have another one planned as, as, as you, as you heard. Um and then the last was on Friday, a couple of school committee members were volunteers. And I know a couple of the school committee members have volunteered in the past, but we had the Credit for Life Fair, a great event at the high school for our high school seniors. Um and it's really just a great partnership um between our community volunteers, a great community partner organization in the Cape Cod Five, uh and our hard-working D Y staff that really make this event possible. It was a huge success, um in a large part to all the, the hard work of the people who make it possible. Um and just creates a great opportunity for our students to get um a little bit of a taste of um financial literacy, get a real, it's a, if anybody, if folks who haven't been, they, they, it's a simulation of um what life's like, you know, living out on your, on your own. And get, and having to figure out how you actually make ends meet with a certain salary and how you make all that, all that work. And it takes a team of volunteers in order to make it happen. So um thank you for, Cape Cod Five for organizing it, thank to all the D Y staff who make it happen, and, and all the volunteers who um make the simulation come to life. Uh a couple other updates. Uh again, some of this are, my thunder got stolen, but um as uh Principal Kelly mentioned, the SAE playground is like super close to being done. Um if you drive by, you can see the concrete forms are already all laid. Um the concrete would have got started pouring um this week. We've had, you know, we didn't have rain forever. And then all of a sudden, the rain, well, and I guess we were due, but um so the rain impacted the pouring of the concrete. It is scheduled, should get done this week. Um and then once the concrete is done and set, that's largely like pathways and the edging. And then once that's in and set, then the port in place, the colors have been picked. So port in place should go in next week, again, barring any weather complications. You need no rain, and you need te- solid temperatures above forty degrees. So as long as we don't get those two things, then we should um be on schedule for the end of the month. Cuz then the last bit after that is like hydro seeding and a little bit of fence work. Um and that project will be done, and then, you know, a little bit of light cleanup, but. Uh and then that moves us to the turf fields again, a, a little bit of slowdown with the rain. Um although they have been, they were outlaying before the rain started today, so they're working around as much as they can. So they're still working on sewing in or glue, I guess it's like glue that they put the pieces together with a little bit of sewing and gluing. Um they're working on the um, the logo currently. Um so once they get the last bit of the pieces all put together, then they'll start putting all the infill in. And then you gotta spread it all around, or if, I don't know if anybody watched them do it last time, but they put it in, then they come in with a big, I don't know, it's not really a lawnmower. It's like a, a thing with a giant brush, and they move it all around. It's kinda, kinda cool to watch, but anyways. Um so that'll, then they'll get that in, then they'll test. Um our engineers will come back and test it, make sure it all drains the way it's supposed to. Then once they, that, uh they move on from that, then they'll work that. The upper field has the track around it, so then they'll pave the upper track. Um and then the last uh is fencing. So they've taken down the fencing um to bring all the machines in and out. So then they'll finish the fencing, and then that project will be done again. Some light cleanup, some grass that'll have to be fixed, like up. They never ultimately ended up using the um JV like outfield, but there's been like some staging along the edge, sort of the, I don't know, would be sort of like foul territory on the left, on the left field side. Um like some, some light repair work along that edge um as they're on their way out. And then um last is, uh last, so not this past Friday, but the Friday before, on the tenth, was uh Oc- was All Cape In-service Day um for professional development. And our staff participated in a wide variety of professional development activities um organized by our instructional leadership team. Uh it's included, but wasn't limited to language ambassador training, which is um largely for how staff work with um staff who are interpreters, right? So there's a, there's a training for, and we do have, we're blessed to have uh access to a fair amount of interpreters in the district. Um and so this training is for how do you effectively, when you're in a situation where, you know, the, the parent or the other community member, or perhaps a student, is, their first language is not English, and you need to work with an interpreter. And you're, you know, I'm an, I only speak one language. So if I have to work with an interpreter, what are the effective stra- strategies for me to work with an interpreter? Um so that was what that, that language ambassador training is. Um and then the, with some folks were getting training in the new, our new K-12 SEL curriculum, which you heard. And that's been kind of in phases, so some people had it at a different date, other people had it on the tenth. Um there's training for some folks in the new ELA curriculums. Again, some people are in pioneering for the HMH, some people are in our six-to-eight curriculum. Um we had some targeted PD for special educators. Uh myself and some others were in the C-stag training, um plus a wide host of other offerings, some offered by the collaborative. Um anyways, it's, it was all part of our commitment to the core value of excellence specifically. We have a behavior that states that we empower students to take accountability for their learning and equip educators to master their craft using evidence-based and innovative models for instruction and uh in classroom management. So it was great just to see that all come to life on that day. Took a lot of planning and effort by our instruction team. Um you should see the massive spreadsheet where literally every person has all these different places they have to go. Um I don't, I don't know how it all comes together, but it does. Um it would give me an ice cream headache just to, it gives me an ice cream headache to look at the spreadsheet, let alone trying to put all those pe- all those pieces in all the right places. So that is it for me. Through the chair, take any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to school committee business. Uh the consent agenda, consent, consent agenda has minutes from June second, twenty twenty-five and June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion in a second, any questions? All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed, any abstained? Perfect. We're four zero. Numbers are small, getting a little larger each week. We have the next one, we'll have five. Uh bills, requisitions, and payrolls. A reminder, please check your email, district email, and make sure that when uh those come around, that you are signing them on a timely basis so that bills can get paid. Um it speeds up the process so that we don't have to sit here and sign them all, and they don't have to wait for our meetings. Um next is calendar, school committee topics. Um as mentioned numerous times, this week is Parent-Teacher Conference Week, uh this Tuesday, which is tomorrow, and Thursday, the twenty-third. It's a half-day for all schools. Uh the Town of Dennis will be having their special town meeting again to- tomorrow at seven PM. And then topics, our next meeting is November third. We will have an executive s- uh session at five forty-five uh as briefly discussed at the last meeting in regards to uh litigation on the turf fields. Um and then we'll have a curriculum update, and then information um about bids and, and notes of bids for money that has been um borrowed and abandoned. And then we'll have a quarterly finance update, which we're excited to hear about. Um anyone in the, the public looking to speak? Seeing none, we will skip that part of the public comment. Marilyn's looking to make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second, any questions, seeing none. All those in favor say aye, aye. All opposed, all abstained, thank you so much.